Good evening. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It is February 5th, 2025, 6:01 PM. Clerk, if you wouldn't mind taking role.
Commissioner Bowie, Commissioner Hamadeh, Commissioner Rose.
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
Chair Wolbert.
I am here.
Chair Wolbert, you have a corn.
Excellent. Now's the time we want to salute the flag. Commissioner Rose, would you do us the honors?
Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Agenda item number three is a report from the Planning Secretary on any late communication items. I don't believe we have any tonight. Is that correct?
No, we do not.
Fantastic. Item number four, ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding any site visits or ex parte communications about public hearing or regular business items. Are there any disclosures that we need tonight?
Nothing here.
None for me either. Agenda item number five, any special presentations? I don't see any on the agenda. That's correct?
No.
Item number six, oral communications. Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, please read the procedure into record.
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
I believe we don't have any speaker cards tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. We will go ahead and close oral communication and move on to item number seven, approval of minutes. Looks like we have some minutes from December 4th, 2024, regular meeting.
I'd move to approve.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Anderson, seconded by Chair Wolbert, to approve the minutes of the December 4th, 2024, regular meeting. Commissioner Bowie, Commissioner Hamadeh, Commissioner Rose.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Wolbert.
Yes.
Motion passes through zero.
All right. We don't have any public hearing items tonight, so we will skip agenda item number eight. We will move on to agenda item number nine, regular business. I'd like to call upon staff to please present item 9.1.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Ken Fittelman, Principal Planner for the city. We are here tonight to initiate a request to amend seven sections of the Westminster zoning code. All right. So a little background. Per Section 17.620 of the Westminster Municipal Code, staff must take any proposed Code text amendments to either the City Council or Planning Commission for initiation through a resolution of intention. Staff is proposing to initiate the amendment of seven chapters or sections of the zoning code tonight. And we'll go through those sections, see, one by one. So the first three sections we are looking to amend are Sections 17.400.135, that's accessory dwelling units. Section 17.400.122, those are SB 9 housing developments. And Chapter 15.570, that's the affordable housing density bonus section of the code. All three of these sections are based on state laws which have been amended within the last few years. The sections must be updated to bring the Westminster Municipal Code into compliance with state law. As an added incentive, at this point, our accessory dwelling units section of the code is questionable because we have not updated in the last two years to amend sections that the state said were mandatory. And our SB 9 housing development is also questionable because that was originally passed a temporary resolution or emergency resolution. That was only good for six months and then needed to be amended. It was never brought back in that time, so it was never officially adopted into the code. We're also looking to amend Chapter 17.500, applications, processing, and fees. This chapter regulates the intake and processing of new entitlements and development permits. We're looking mainly at the expiration clauses within. The Code text currently calls for a six-month window for completeness, so six months from the date of initial application. If an applicant does not get their project deemed complete, it is expired. They may extend that once through an application, but the window is too limited for larger projects, and what we're ending up doing is expiring projects before they can adequately respond to staff's comments. Additionally, it calls for an expiration after six months of delay on the part of the applicant once an application has been deemed complete. This language is vague. We want to move forward with stronger language to give applicants more of a concrete idea of what we're looking for as far as expiration, so they will know when they're in violation, and we are better able to tell them when they're in danger of being in violation. Chapters 17.515 and 17.520, that is our zoning clearance and development review chapters. The chapters provide the applicability and criteria for development applications, everything from new sign permits to new single-family houses to new commercial buildings. The uses subject to zoning clearance, though, are currently found under the development review chapter instead of the zoning clearance chapter, which creates a situation where it can make it hard to find exactly which section of the code certain uses are found in. And the permit type is not always appropriate for the listed uses, so staff is proposing to go through the uses, clarify exactly what is needed as far as permit, and possibly update the list, dropping some, adding others if we feel appropriate. The last chapter is Chapter 17.620. That's the general plan, zoning map, and zoning code amendments. Currently, staff can't initiate zoning code amendments on our own. We have to go through a process like this where we come to either the Planning Commission, the City Council, and have you initiate a resolution of intention. What that does for staff, though, it entails a staff report, writing a resolution, presentation at public meetings. It's eating into time when we could be working on the code text changes rather than going through the formality of getting something adopted. So staff is looking to be able to self-initiate zoning code amendments. We're not looking to assert the power of the Planning Commission and City Council. All these amendments would still have to come back through public hearings before first the Planning Commission and City Council before they were adopted. So Planning Commission, City Council would still have adequate opportunity to see any proposed amendments and comment on them. And we would still anticipate taking any major or possibly controversial amendments for the resolution of intention first before self-initiating. Environmental review, the initiation of any zoning code amendment is not a project per SEQA. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution of intention initiating the seven zoning code amendments. And I am here to answer any questions you may have.
So at this point, Ken, and it looks like the first one that we're looking at with the housing, those are mandated. We don't really have a choice as to what needs to be done there. That's just something that needs to be taken care of. And then the others seem to be more of a desire to improve the flow process, make it easier for staff and our customers to get projects approved.
Correct. The first three are strictly to deal with state laws. Like I said, two of ours are pretty much in danger of being considered null and void at this point. Our affordable density bonus section of the code is mandating conditions we can't mandate as a city, so we need to change all three of those just to be in compliance with state law. The others are quality of life changes. It's to make things easier for staff, to make things easier for applicants, taking some things off your plate, like this meeting, because this is just a formality at this point. Staff would much rather spend the time when we're doing the resolution of intention actually working on the changes so we can get those back to you quicker.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
My only question is if our code is so questionable, how have we been approving projects since the state mandated changes went into play a couple of years ago, especially with ADUs?
Well, part of it is we are not following certain code sections, and we have gotten, we have gone through the city attorney's office that since state law overrides city code sections, we are following state law in many instances rather than our code. But that creates confusion among applicants and staff, which parts are we following, which parts are we going by state? So we're okay because we are still trying to follow state law as much as possible, but we do need to clean up our code so it is in compliance with state law.
What happens if we don't?
Yeah.
Accessory dwelling units and SB 9 housing developments, our sections would be null and void if anybody challenged them, and then we would be fully going by state law. HCD would step in, say, you will follow state law, your code, as far as these two options, is void. While the state does mandate what we have to include, we are allowed to be more strict in some areas than state law. So this would open up a broader range of projects that we would have to allow per state law.
If we don't, it opens up a broader range of projects. The changes, how do they narrow the scope of the project?
We're allowed to mandate, we can use height, we can use lot coverage in certain instances to possibly limit sizes of ADUs. Our SB 9 code is, it doesn't allow for four units right now on a single property, which it has to by state law. If they ever stepped, if HCD stepped in, Scott could probably share more about this, but, I mean, we would lose any control at all for the most part. We could still go by R1 zoning standards, I believe, but we'd lose any discretionary approval or any ability to ask for, like, we can put into the code that we want it to match the main house, that we want all structures on a property to maintain a certain style. We can go by standards like that, we would lose that ability.
Okay, so updating the code now allows for more objective standards?
We are allowed to have objective standards for ADUs and SB 9. We would lose that ability if our code was just considered void.
Okay. And is there anything in these amendments, at least on 400.135 and the ADUs, anything that actually is more restrictive than state law currently? Because right now, what we've experienced is that it's the Wild, Wild West out there. We have no control over ADUs. ADUs come into you guys, you rubber stamp them, they go out.
Which isn't quite true. We do review ADUs. We do have some criteria that we make sure they meet, like, they have to match the style of the main house. Roof pitch has to be fairly consistent. We can clean that up, so it is, as long as it's an objective standard, we would apply to a single-family house. We can apply it to an ADU. So we can create standards to get a style and a look that we want in Westminster. If we don't pass the code, it would be more of the Wild West, and we would be rubber stamping rather than doing the review we are currently doing.
Okay. And I ask these questions because we see a lot of them going up where there's almost zero land left in the remaining property. There's no covered porches, patios, there's no square footage for any of that. There's barely even a four-foot setback from any of the neighboring fences. Sometimes they encroach on that, sometimes they get away with it. I know that there are some stipulations we might be able to put on. If you're going to build the ADU, you have to have and provide block wall on all sides of the property. I know that's for ADUs that are being built from scratch. I don't know about retrofit ADUs, so to speak, on existing R1 properties. But are those things can be included in ADU changes? Are any of those types of things included here?
Or the block walls, we absolutely could not condition. That would be above and beyond the scope of the project. We're only allowed to affect the ADU. We can't make somebody who's building an ADU, we can't make them affect the rest of the property.
That's only for new construction plans, then?
That would be for, like, new single-family houses or new multifamily buildings. We can mandate that as part of a new house, not as an ADU. As far as setbacks, the state says four-foot side rear. We can't go shorter than that. One of the changes we are looking at would be, right now, the code exempts 800 square feet of an ADU from lot coverage, which means technically you can go up to, I mean, a 7,500-square-foot lot, you could get a 50% lot coverage. We are going to change that section of the code, where any ADU will count towards lot coverage. We'll just add a provision that it would not keep an ADU of at least 800 square feet from being built. That is something we're allowed to do. I passed it in another city. So that'll help free up some of that open space on the lot you're talking about, because that'll keep it more towards the 40%, not the 50% we're seeing sometimes now.
Yeah, or more. So just a couple of questions on that. And then, as far as the proposed changes on all the codes in that third section, 620, we kind of went through that real quickly, but what is, you know, 620.010, initiation of amendments. It says amendment may be initiated by the council, the commission, or the property owner. Something in your speech, though, said that you're trying to streamline that so that the director can initiate amendments, or?
We're trying to allow staff to initiate what form that would take. We're still working on, like, most of these amendments, we have not progressed on. We don't want to do the work until it's initiated, just in case you don't initiate them. ADUs and SB 9, we've done some work because those we have to move forward with by state law. But what we're looking to do is be able to have staff initiate, so especially with, like, the ADU code, the SB 9 code, that we can take care of those at staff level, not have to go through the initiation and bring those to as fully formed codes. So you'd still get to see them, you'd still get to comment and vote on them. We're just, we're removing this initial step.
Okay.
So we want to be able to react quicker to state laws and changing conditions than we currently can.
So instead of waiting for the council to ask you to go ahead and update the code, you just want to be able to update the code, bring the language back to the commission and the council for approval at that point?
Correct.
Okay. Good evening, Tony. Welcome. No problem. They changed these crazy meetings from 6:30 to 6:00, Tony, so it's totally understandable. I know you didn't get to hear the presentation, Tony, but did you have any questions about the regular business item 9.1? Because I'm sure you were looking at your binder before. I want to afford you an opportunity to ask the questions.
Right now, I do not have it yet, but I will later on.
Any other questions?
I want to go back to the lot, the lot coverage that you started talking about. So is that planned to be included in the code?
It's something we're looking at. Like I said, none of these codes are fully formed. We've done some work on the ADU and SB 9, mostly just to make sure we're hitting what the state wants. We're looking at changing other sections, so that's an area we are looking at changing, but none of the changes are fully formed yet.
Because I think that one of the things that, you know, our general plan, as an example, it has language that says that we want to, you know, protect and preserve our neighborhoods. And then we have in conflict these mandates that are coming from the state that are kind of dismantling R1 and creating, you can do four units on an R1. And so then I think that as a city, we'd like to see the code be, you know, as protective of our neighborhoods as possible, and if lot size coverage is something that we can include, I would certainly encourage that.
Well, there's the caveat. We have to allow ADUs of at least 800 square feet, no matter what.
Right.
But currently, what happens is our code exempts the first 800 square feet of an ADU, so it doesn't count at all. So if you've got a house, let's say, we'll use easy numbers, 10,000-square-foot lot, you've got a 3,000-square-foot house. If you build an 800-square-foot lot, that'd bring you up to 38% lot coverage. It would limit any future development for the most part. But since we exempt that, you've still got 1,000 feet you could use for, like, an addition to the house. So it is something we're looking at. When our ADU code was originally written, from my understanding, council told us to be more liberal. That's why we allow 1,200 square feet for an ADU. The state allows us to cap it at 1,000. So that's another thing we could consider if the commission wanted us to.
I think that we should ask the city to consider that as a commission. I think that we should ask the city to consider that as a commission. I don't know. How do I, how do I initiate that?
Great question.
You, you actually don't need to initiate, you can provide us feedback and we'll get back to you, because this is just an initiation of the changes. We are open to changes, and that's one that when we bring it back, it's such an easy section of code. When you're looking at it, that's when you can say, if it's not a number that, you know, it has to be 1,000, we're, we allow up to 1,200 right now. That's when we can bring it back, and you're like, you could actually tell us, I'm open to approving this, but I want this with the condition that we're capping the size at 1,000 square feet. We can make that change on the spot. So when it moved to council, it would move forward at 1,000 square feet.
And how about the lot coverage issue, then? Because you said that's being considered, but there hasn't, there's nothing definitive?
Well, we have, I mean, nothing is definitive in our code. We haven't even had the attorney review it yet. So what we're, those are a little more flushed out than the other sections, but we're still, we're still revising.
Well, how about a general statement, then, something along the line that the Planning Commission would like to see staff come up with what will do the most to limit the size of the ADUs?
Well, to do that, we would, I mean, we would add the provision we're looking at that counts the 800, any ADU towards lot coverage. And we would cap the total size of an ADU at 1,000. That's what we're allowed to do by state law.
Yeah, because I think that, I think that the current concern is just protecting outdoor space and not having like residential R1 lots being just completely built out, like, you know, as Casey was saying, that's 100% true. You see it all over. And we have a lot of ADUs that are being built in the city of Westminster. So it does feel like everything's getting approved.
And, and we do permit a lot of ADUs compared to neighboring cities.
I'm aware.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think around Orange County and some of our neighboring cities, there are a few cities that are extreme on one end. They don't want to allow them at all, they're putting moratoriums on them, they're fighting the state, they're going through millions of dollars of lawsuits. Then there's other cities that are probably overly permissive, and what's happening is the quality of life around that city is actually going down. You have too many people living on an R1 lot that was never designed to house that many people or that many cars. And we've got a couple commissioners up here that represent quite a few constituents in the city. We want to make sure that the mentality behind planning, you know, just on the subject, would be, how can we actually restrict the state of California from telling us what to do as much as we possibly can without opening the city up to a lawsuit? So we, we want to be as tight as possible on these ADUs, because, I mean, I can give you countless examples, just in my own neighborhood, where you're talking 80% lot coverage on the two units with no provision of parking, and two units, two individual housing units, one 1,500 square feet, one 1,200 square feet, and there's nine cars that are tied to the residents of that property, and there's nowhere to park them. And we are going to have a massive problem on our hands if we do not address these ADUs and be within state law, but at the same time, try to maximize the utility of our residents and the quality of life. We have to balance that kind of stuff. So just throwing it out there, if you're going through these type of ADU discussions and SB9 discussions as staff, I think it's important to know what the spirit of, I would say, the general of the population would be, which is, let's go ahead and maintain the quality of life in our neighborhoods. And we have to have areas for high density, and we'll, we'll meet our arena qualifications, you know, in some aspects that way. So just a couple of comments as we go through item 9.1, and give Tony a little bit of time to think about things, too. Tony, did you have any questions at this point in time?
Right now, do, does this one apply from state requirement, and then we can change it, anything that's applicable to our city?
Well, all we're asking you to do tonight is allow us to make the changes. So we, we are still working on the changes, we will work, we have to work within state guidelines for all of these. We can make them as restrictive as possible, if that's the way the commission wants us to lean, within state guidelines.
Okay.
But like I said, we, we've barely started working on these because we needed to initiate this before we spent too much staff time working on the changes.
Yes, okay.
But it is, but, but staff will keep in mind and to the fullest extent possible, and keeping within the state guidelines, it will work hard to make this as beneficial as possible to the city of Westminster, to ensure that we can get the, I guess, the least amount of increase possible, and still comply with state law, because I think under state law now, Ken, a person could convert their garage.
Correct.
And they could also put an AD unit in, in the back?
Correct.
They can do, also, they can have a garage conversion and put an AD unit in the back?
Correct.
And convert a room inside the home to an ADU?
No. You're allowed, our reading of state law is you can have two ADUs on a property, a J-ADU and an ADU.
Okay. And then no parking requirements?
Depending on where they are, if, if they're within a half mile of a transit stop, there's no parking requirements.
Okay, no parking. And they can also develop with an ADU in the front yard?
No, our reading is 1 ADU, 1 J-ADU.
But in terms of being in the front yard, if there's no space for it in the backyard, then, then our code allows you to be in the front yard?
Our code does.
Well, we have to by state law. So we have to allow for at least an 800 square foot ADU.
In the front yard?
Well, the state right now has been, the law itself doesn't say, the state so far has been good about protecting front yards if there's room in the backyard. But if you had a house that was built towards the back property line and there was no room on, on that lot to put one in the backyard, we would have to allow one in the front yard.
So HCD has been all over the map. Sorry, the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, they've had issued different guidance as far as what a city can and cannot do, but we, we can certainly look into this, and the City Attorney's Department will speak with the Development Services Department, and we can certainly go the direction that, what I'm hearing is, be within the law, limit ADUs to the extent reasonably possible.
Yes. And did you also mention, Ken, now, and I recall when the city council, and I was surprised when it happened, but I recall when the city council added 200 square feet for the minimum, for the size of an ADU. Do we have an opportunity at this point, that the commission can say, let's consider reducing that back to the state?
We can look into that. The issue is that there, again, the ADU law is extremely poorly written, and there are about five different ways to interpret the state law, and none of them are bulletproof. So there is language in state law that talks about 1,200 feet, there is language that talks about 1,000, there's language that talks about 850, there's language that talks about 800. In other words, it's all over the map. So I'm hearing, we'd like to limit it if possible, and we'll, I think what we'll have, it's, it's a balance of how much risk are you willing to take on to preserve our community as we see fit?
Well, and there, there might even be some building standards that people are getting away with that we're not fully inspecting. I have one in my neighborhood, for example, they didn't put up something as simple as a rain gutter. And now you have another roof, a 1,200 square foot or more, 2,000 square feet of roofing, that's now dumping water into a neighbor's yard, even with a four-foot setback, because the size of the roof, the neighbors, now, the fence is falling apart. There are so many things that have to be considered when it comes to being courteous to your neighbor and taking the right approach to building, that I want, I would like for one to see in that code. So that way, we're, you know, not that we're making it incredibly tough to build ADUs, but at the same time, it would meet the objective standards of the city, so that we provide quality development within the state law that everybody can enjoy. Because there's nothing worse than having a porch light on for an ADU that's built in somebody else's backyard that you can see through your kitchen window, and it's on at, you know, 500,000 lumens, or whatever this thing's putting off from that porch light, keeping you up at night.
And we could deal with things like that. I know, I've kind of got it written into the code we've got, because I previously, when I was with another city, wrote their ADU code. And one of the provisions we put into their ADU code is that any exterior lighting must be shielded in a way that all light is maintained or contained onto subject property. That's absolutely something like that we can write in. The gutters aren't prescribed by building code, that's why they don't add them, you don't, there's nothing in building code that says you need gutters. We may be able to add something that says along property line walls, you must have gutters. We'd have to look into that.
I do know there's a state, there are provisions, there are requirements within the law that says one property cannot drain onto another property. I do know that. I must, I don't recall exactly which, which code section that would be, but there, there is a code section that requires that, so if, it sounds more like what you're saying, Casey, if the water's just splashing onto the fence, it's not necessarily going into the adjacent yard. But, but if, if water is draining in to the adjacent yard, there, there are code provisions to address that.
Yeah, and I think, from just a spirit standpoint, again, it's the, what's the core driving factor of the law? Is it, let's make this the wild, wild west, build whatever you want, we don't care how much property's left, we don't care about open space, it's just cram as many people in as possible, or quality development, quality of life, great neighbors that are friends, instead of hating each other because of what this one neighbor did? These are in R1 zone property, people living the American dream, paying their mortgage on time, so they can have a house and grow their income and grow their wealth with their property values in California. And then when you slap an ADU in the backyard, maybe that person's property value goes up, maybe the rest of the ones around it don't, because nobody wants to move in when there's a giant blaring light like Las Vegas in the backyard, or now you have to fight for parking. It will ruin the quality of life in this town if we don't get a handle on it. I, I promise you that. So just from the spirit of it, you know, I know, I, I definitely believe that we need to update our code, because we want to be in state compliance, absolutely. But I want to try to be as tough as we can on a lot of these density bonus SB9s and specifically ADUs, from, from my perspective. Thank you, Alan and Tony, for joining us. Sorry, we changed the meeting time, if you weren't aware. It's going to be 6 o'clock.
I wish you guys emailed me or let me know, at least.
So we know you've had the binders and some chance to look over it. Any questions that you might have off the top of your head about some of these zoning code amendments that we're discussing?
I didn't listen to the whole thing, so I'm just gonna...
No problem.
I'm just gonna listen.
Just, just an observation, too, and this, this ties into, I think, going back a ways. I think we all recall, probably five or six years ago, we heard nothing except about drought, 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 conserve water, do everything you can, water's precious, we can't afford to waste our water. And that was coming from Sacramento, our state legislators, and our governor, got to conserve, and now it's, we don't hear about that anymore. We don't hear about conserving water, we don't hear about drought, we don't hear about water shortages, we don't hear about the fact that Southern California is a desert. It's, let's put in more housing units, and then we don't have parking. And I, what I see, another thing happening, too, is that this is going to change, I think, the ownership picture or the occupancy picture in a lot of cities, not just Westminster. What people will do, they will have an ADU built in their backyard, then they will move out of the house they're currently living in, move to a community, and then rent their two units. So I think we will see a, a large increase in rental units in our R1 districts as well. And then we also have the provision that there's no additional parking required. And already in my neighborhood, I'm seeing the fact that we're getting, our street is getting more and more cars. And at some point, when this really becomes an issue, I think we may see some neighbors confronting one another about, you can't park in front of my house, this is my property, which, obviously, that's not the case, it's public property. So this ADU concept I see is, one of our former city attorneys used to say, is fraught with problems.
I know, I have, I have clients in Costa Mesa that, they've actually gone, some streets have voted for permit parking only. And if you want to park in your driveway, that's free. If you want to park on the street, it's $25 a month. If you have a second car to park on that street, it's another $25 a month, and then it actually keeps going up the more cars you have. So, I, I mean, I'm telling you, there's going to be residents that'll come out of the woodwork saying, we need to make this resident parking only, permit parking only, and it's going to be very interesting.
To a lot of neighborhoods in a lot of cities that have permit parking because of, because of that. I have a, I have a question about the setbacks. Is that mandated by the state?
It is.
The four-foot setback?
Yes.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, but an ADU can have a four-foot setback to the rear of the property, but if you were going to put like a family room addition on a house, then that would have a different setback?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. All right. Yeah, I really, I, I, I'm just going to echo what everyone else on the panel is saying, that, you know, we, we want to restrict this because it is affecting the value of the homes around it. So like, maybe the house that gets the ADU, their property value goes up, because now they have two units that they can rent out, but everyone around it, their value is definitely getting impacted negatively. And so I would, I would absolutely encourage you in your position, I think that we need to be compliant with the state so that we don't get this taken away from us, and that we don't, you know, because like you said, that if we wind up with what the state says that we can do, then a lot of things are going to happen. And so I think we need to get compliant, but I do hope that we are going to be looking at this with really, you know, a hard line to protect our neighborhoods.
I do want the commission to understand, there is very little we can do to restrict these.
I understand.
We can make some size requirements, but it is not going to be anything drastic, because it's set law now that we have to allow them. What we can possibly do is, you know, if we count them towards lot coverage, it wouldn't cap the ADU, but it may cap what they can do to the house, so they wouldn't be able to expand as much. We can possibly cap the ADU at 1,000 rather than 1,200, but that's pretty much the extent of what we can do. The other things we could do would be objective standards, to ensure that if we are going to get them, they would look as nice and as appropriate for the neighborhood as we can do. But there is little we can do to restrict them.
I totally understand that, and I'm just going to encourage the, the city staff to work with the attorneys to come up with things that can be restrictive to protect the neighborhoods as much as we can.
I have a question. When, when staff gets the, this all put together, puts all the pieces together, will this come back to the commission and then to the city council?
Correct. And we, and when we say self-initiation, one of the reasons we're asking for that is, any code text amendment goes to Planning Commission for a recommendation, or you'll have a public hearing, and then we take that recommendation in code text, either way, to city council for another public hearing.
Yep, sounds good.
A quick question. On the R4 zone, setback in the back or on the side, is it same as the R1 zone?
No. It's, it varies by zone. I'd have to pull up the code to make sure, but we do, we do vary.
Okay. Let's say a house in R1, R4 zone, just one house only, huge yard, still empty in the back. What would be the setback on that?
For an ADU or for?
No, just R4, it's a R unit.
I would have to look. I would have to look, too. I was not prepared with that information, because we weren't talking about the regular houses. An ADU would still be four feet.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we have any motions at this time, to take action on this?
Yeah, I'd move as recommended.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Rose, to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of Intention of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, Initiating Zoning Code Amendments to Amend Chapter 17.620 General Plan, Zoning Map and Zoning Code Amendments, Section 17.400.135, Residential Uses Accessory Dwelling Units, Section 17.400.122, Residential Uses SB9 Two-Unit Housing Development in the R1 District, Chapter 17.500, Applications, Processing and Fees, Chapter 17.515, Zoning Clearance, Chapter 17.520, Development Review, and Chapter 17.570, Affordable Housing Density Bonuses of the Westminster Municipal Code."
Call roll?
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadeh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Wolberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Please, on next meeting, if you let me know about the setback on the R4 zone. Thanks.
Ken, would you like to read the final comments on that particular item?
So the commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after the So the commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after the decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any interested party may file an appeal to the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day period.
Excellent. That ends agenda item number nine. We'll move on to 10 reports. It looks like we don't have any, is that correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. Item 11, any matters from staff? None? Great. Item 12, matters from the planning commission, including AB 1, 2, 3, 4, reports when required. Anything from the commission?
I, I have a request. Last year, the commission considered an application for the conditional use permitted was alcoholic beverages at a facility.
Lavender.
Lavender. And there were a number of conditions that the planning commission approved. And then it came to our attention that the applicant apparently didn't like some of those, commissioner was trying to kind of wiggle out of some of them or massage them or change them in some fashion. So I, I would appreciate a report back to the commission as to exactly the status of lavender and did any of the commission's conditions change?
I can answer some of that now. So just, that property did sell. It changed ownership about six, seven months ago. There was a new owner for the property. We have been working with code enforcement to gain conformance with their conditions of approval. I have talked directly to the owner. He was unaware that they were operating so far out of compliance with the conditions of approval. So we are working directly with him, hopefully as a new owner who wants to do the right thing, to bring it into compliance with how it was approved. So we are working towards that.
Okay, so will you be able to give us an up, an update at some point then as to just, as thing, as it develops?